All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the agenda. Are any agenda additions or corrections? Do we have anything, Matt?
Yeah, Mayor Council, there is one addition. You should have received a copy of it. It's a resolution, so this will be added. Item number 4A. It's a donation from a consideration of a donation from the Lions. And we do have members from the Lions Club to present that donation.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mary, second by Matt, to approve the agenda with the addition. Roll call. Chad.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi again.
Motion, motion carries. Invocation, Hope Family Church.
Good evening. Pastor Tim Van den Langenberg from Hope Family Church. Wow, I look as big on screen as I do in the mirror. Before I was a minister 30 years ago, I actually was a salesman for Nita Foundry Company, selling manhole covers and drainage grates. And so the project we just did out here on Main Street was of great interest to me because I walked through there many times to see what was being done. I sold a lot of castings in my career there, but I never poured any into concrete. I never laid pipe, and I never did what municipalities had to do, and that was to pay for the projects. We all have calling and we all have jobs to do. And as we begin our invocation tonight, I want to thank you for doing the job you do, for the integrity and honor that you display in leading our city. And I want to encourage you to continue to do that. Some of you, as you finish your terms, and others, as you continue. We hear in the Christmas story simply that Jesus' coming is good news. And so I pray that the coming of Jesus with his good news would bless you, keep you, would challenge you, and improve everything about us. So that in this meeting and in everything you do on behalf of the city, you would be blessed, and therefore, the citizens would be blessed. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you. Thanks, Pastor Tim. Next, a pledge of allegiance. Dave, you want to do the honors?
Everybody was gently. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Dave. Next is recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything to make?
I'd like to say something, Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
I know we have a resolution coming up too, so thanks for that ahead of time. But I did want to just say thank you again to Walt and Lynn Clay for their donation to add a walk from the trail to the police memorial. City staff just completed that, and it really turned out nice. So again, just wanted to thank the Clays as well as city staff for the great work that they did.
All righty, thanks, Steve. Does anybody else have anything? All right, we do have a.
Mayor Gary. I want to abstain from this.
All righty. We have a resolution number 15255, a resolution accepting a donation from the Hutch Lions Club.
Yep, I think Mayor, they're going to address the council.
My name is Lion Jan Sebastian. I'm the vice president of our local Lions Club. And we have Dean Huttell, Lion Dean Huttell, and Lion. I, I know. And you are Lion Darrell Huttell. I'll get everybody's name. I don't know, really, they're wearing their masks, you know how that is. And, okay, I'm supposed to tell you that I live at 225 Dale Street here in Hutchinson. That was my, that's what David told me to tell you. Anyway, and do I tell you the total of the donation?
If you want to.
$1,620. And it's the first of five donations for our park in Southwest Avenue here in town. It's a brand new park that we're starting up, and we're very excited that we have it in our community.
I'll take it. It's a great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to thank the council for continuing to have the invocation. I think that's great.
I would like to add that the park really turned out nice. Like, it's not too far from my house, and we head over there pretty regularly. They kind of have a fun little swing that a parent can swing with an infant, you know, and they're kind of face to face, you know, but you swing at the same time. And my little one-year-old Charlie really enjoys that. So it was a nice little addition because it's the only one like it in the, in the city, as far as I know.
So Chad, does Benny give that a thumbs up too?
Yes, even though like the initial plans did not meet his requirements as, as we talked, he has been enjoying the park since then.
All righty, can we have a motion to accept that donation?
I'd make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to accept the donation from the Lions with Dave is going to abstain. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Steve. Hi. Chad.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Matt, do we have anybody that wants to address the council tonight?
Anybody from the public that'd like to address the council? Not at this point, although Chief Giverson is going to jump in here early to address the council.
All righty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I tried to do, since I've been appointed to this position, any new officer that we happen to hire within the city, I like to bring them before you and introduce you to them. So tonight is no different. Nikki Copeland has been working now for two weeks, three weeks. She just finished her first week of field training outside the orientation. So again, I'll introduce you to Nikki Copeland, and I'll allow her to say a couple of words.
You can talk about the speech, right?
Chief Giverson, if you'd be kind, Chief Giverson, if you'd be kind enough to back up a little bit so she could remove her mask, so we can see your walk, please.
My name is Nikki Copeland. It's nice to meet everyone. I just started here, and I look forward to getting to know all of you. I'm from Spicer, Minnesota, and I'm planning to move towards this area.
Welcome, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes.
Just wondering how our staffing levels, are we full staffing now?
Technically, our patrol staff is full staff. We do have a couple that are out on leave, but other than that, we're technically at full strike.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else, Matt?
Nope.
All righty, we have minutes, regular meeting minutes of November 24th, 2020, and budget workshop minutes of November 24th, 2020. Motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dave got it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve. Roll call, Mary. Steve.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Dave. Hi. Hi, motion carries. Next is consent agenda, one be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of resolution number 15239, transferring funds to the 2020 Construction Fund, General Fund, and Capital Project Fund. B is approval of resolution number 15240, expressing support for state assistance to local businesses impacted by the COVID-19 shutdown. And C is claimed appropriation and contract payments. Anything, anybody wants pulled up?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve, to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Chad.
Well, hi.
Dave. Hi. Hi, motion carries. We do have a public hearing, but can we jump up to the update on the new design for the police station?
Yeah, Mayor, we've got 20 minutes before that public hearing, so I think that's a viable option.
All righty, so let's do the update on the new design of police station and estimate project timeline.
All right, I know, John, you can, you're welcome to turn your screen on and turn your mic on now. We do have John McNamara and some of his staff here, along with Pete, our construction manager. They're going to give the, the update to the city council. And John, I think, I think you have been given the ability to share your screen. Whenever you're ready, so.
I do not have the ability to share.
Yeah, I think now you do, so.
Everybody see that, all right?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving us an opportunity to give an update on where we're at with the new police facility, what we want to share with.
Sorry, John, Pete, can you mute, can you mute your mic because we're getting feedback from you? Thank you.
So tonight, I just have a short agenda for you. Really, I wanted to give you an update on where we're at with the design of the building, talk a little bit about the site, chat about the schedule, and kind of talk through next steps for our team. So this diagram that you see here is the design of the new police facility. For those that have been kind of involved with this, this will be kind of a review. But for the rest of the council, what we look at doing is orienting the building facing towards the memorial park to the north. And so the main entry to the police facility will be located where kind of centralized in this location here. One of the things that we're trying to improve with the new police facility is to expand our lobby in that area to give safe places for people to meet with officers in this location. I want to do, want to highlight one of our interview rooms that we're putting off the lobby. We're also creating what's called a safe room for that. So if somebody is coming to the police facility for whatever reason, and it feels like they could be in a safer location than just public lobby, we are going to have a access to one of the interview rooms off of that lobby so that they can go into that room and block that room and wait for an officer to show up there to help them. We've got a couple of public toilets off of that lobby, a location for kiosks, whether that's a drug kiosk or whatever that might be. And then our main reception counter will be located just as you come in the front door. The patrol area is off to the side of the diagram here, to the, to the west. And that area will also have direct access to the lobby through our conversations with the patrol. And we would like to have them be able to go right out into the lobby, meet with somebody, and then take them into either this interview room here or the one off of the lobby. We also wanted to have access to the lobby from our administration spaces. We located administration, flanking, patrol on the other side, so that if the administrative team or the chief needs to meet with somebody from the public, they'll be able to go out into the lobby and also utilize a conference room that is off that space as well. Directly to the south of our administration is our detectives' cluster. So now our detectives will be co-located in the same building with our police department. And through our conversations, having them close to administration and close to our evidence storage was a good adjacency that we wanted to explore there. To the south of administration and records is our evidence storage area, which not only is proximate to investigations, but is also proximate to the garage. So our main fleet garage will be on the furthest south portion of this diagram that has a mudroom, which is where we'll store gear that the officers use that comes and goes from their vehicle. And then the police garage will also have access near to the evidence storage area and have a dedicated area in the garage for processing of any vehicles that they need to do for their work. Also, at times, they need to store vehicles that are part of a crime. And so we'll have a fenced area in that garage to allow that storage to occur in a safe location. Directly adjacent to that vehicle garage is our tactical garage. This is where our tactical vehicle will be located. This is where our SWAT lockers will be located. So no longer will they be on the second floor of where the EOC is. They'll be directly near where the vehicles are that they need access to. We have a segregated booking area that has a couple of holding cells in here. And what we've kind of decided is that we're going to have, all of these holding cells will be dry cells with a, just a detention toilet located in that area. For the most part, this area will be used for short-term holds for a couple of hours or if there's inclement weather. But for the most part, transportation to the county will still occur on a regular basis. I'd like to also highlight the Emergency Operations Center. We are proposing that the Emergency Operations Center have a secondary entry into it for a couple of reasons. One, that will allow this area to be accessed for other city staff to be able to utilize that space as a large meeting room. EOCs benefit from having regular usage so that the technology can stay up and active for when it's needed for any sort of emergency. We are also locating a fitness room as part of this design. And that fitness room will also have a secondary entrance point so that it can be used for city staff as well. So we want to keep that near to the patrol area, but also accessible from the public. And we'll have a door that'll separate that area so that we can keep the police department separate from that function. One of the things that we're also asked to do, which certainly we'd love to get some feedback from council on, is would there be a possibility of relocating the DMV to this building? And so we've left the space to the north of the EOC because of the fact that it has its own entry point. And when we start to look at the site plan, it has parking off of the retail side of this parking lot. And that seemed like a good location that keeps it separate from the police main lobby, but also gives them some safety and security by being located in this building. Our total square footage right now is roughly about 36,000 square feet. The motor vehicle area that you see here is roughly about another 2,000 square feet. So if council wanted to include that DMV in the building either today or in the future, that would increase the size of the building by another 2,000 square feet to 3,800 square feet. When we look at the site, we've really been exploring ideas on how the site can not only function well for the police department, but also function for other development that the city may want to do. It's quite a large lot that we have here. I do want to highlight that we are going to demolish the Account of Foods building, leaving Liquor Hutch alone. We did find a location, and Integrity has been out with us to kind of look at the structural condition in that building at approximately eight feet off of the backside of the coolers in the liquor store. It is a structural column line, which is where we're going to take the two buildings apart. We will need to redo the, some of the services coming into it, because some of the electrical and phone are being served by the existing Account of Foods. So there is some selective demolition and repeating of services that'll be needed, and potentially some additional mechanical systems in order to allow Liquor Hutch to be its own standalone building. A couple of site features that we're looking at right now is this area in between the liquor store and the new police facility will be our secure parking area for our patrol vehicles. You can see we are proposing another access point off of Adams to circulate in and out of the site. So directly to the east would be a door out of the garage that would be outside the secure fence. If a vehicle was coming back to the police facility to get into the garage, they would go through a secure gate and fence and be able to enter into the garage. Our tactical garage and our detention garage are also off of that secure parking area. One of the features of the building is we no longer will need to be able to release anybody that's in custody out through the main public lobby, which is what occurs now. We are proposing a secondary prison or release lobby that would then release out to the larger parking lot separate from individuals that are coming to the police department to either get records, file a report, or just generally talk to an officer. We are proposing to have some angled parking, not unlike what is on other areas along Hurst and Washington, out in front of the police department. But we do want to preserve kind of that central axis of the building. And you can see here that we've aligned that entry with the veterans' park on the other side. We're still working on the site plan. We believe that there's some reworking and redevelopment of this intersection that would benefit as kind of a gateway as you come in off of Adams and as you approach the police department. And we're really, from a design perspective, have been talking to city folks and the police department about making sure that the design solution reflects the building as having the three sides to it versus having a front and a back. So that as we look at developing the exterior architecture of the building, that this facade along Adam Street has some similar architectural design to the rest of the building. To the EOC, or potentially the DMV, would also be off of this retail parking lot here. And one of the things that we're exploring through our conversations is, is there a way that we can clean up the circulation of this parking lot by aligning the entries on the north and entries on the south to already established access points on there? And that would still leave, as we looked at some of the downtown master planning, would leave some developable parcels on the site for some smaller businesses. And should the city decide they want to allow that opportunity of that location. From a schedule side of things, we are wrapping up what we call design development right now. So you can see that the plan is pretty well established at this point. We've had some great meetings with our police corps planning group, and are at the point with project where we're going to start moving quickly into some of our exterior design concepts and start after the first of the year, really digging into the construction documents so that we can sometime in the spring, that March-April timeframe, come back to council with approval, looking for approval to get this work so that we can start potentially looking at separating and demolishing the Account of Foods and getting Liquor Hutch up on its own, and then starting general construction on the police department after site prep early in the summer of 2021. And we expect roughly about a year's worth of construction, which would occupy the facility in the spring of 2022. One of the other next steps that we have is, in the next few weeks, we'll be collaborating with Integrity. I'm putting together an estimate of the project as it stands today that will include the demolition of the Account of Foods and some of the site development stuff that we talked about so that we can get feedback from council on the full scope of the work here coming up. So with that, we'll continue on with our site development and our detailed plan development, and then continue on with our compartmental meetings. And like I said, we'll likely want to come back to council for formal approval of the final drawings and design sometime in January. That would also include where we're at with our process. That, Mayor and Council, I would send it back to you for any questions.
Hi, John, you asked about feedback on having DMV included. I think that's a great option, and so just wanted to share that. I think that would be good. Also, I'm just kind of curious if you can show the site layout, why you had angled parking in front, the main entrance? Just seems like, you know, there could be people that are coming off of Adam Street, and so why not just straight-in parking?
Yes, one of the things that we had looked at, and certainly we would like some feedback from planning and zoning, we were trying to match up with some of the other street development stuff that has been done in the area. And in our conversations with police department, we felt that having parking right out front was a good idea. Certainly, a council member, we could look at doing that at 90 degrees. We are starting to get a little bit tight for the liquor store as we continue to push the building south. But I feel that, yes, perpendicular parking is more advantageous. I don't mind exploring that. I would want to get some feedback on whether it's appropriate for landscaping.
Okay. And then, just curious, there seems to be some open space to the east of the building as well as the Liquor Hutch, so that would just be asphalted.
You're referring to this area here?
Yes, sir.
We are, we're still working on what we want to do in there. We've had some initial conversations with Liquor Hutch as far as how they do deliveries. Ultimately, what we've been talking about and what we would like to do is eliminate the access point to the shipping and receiving area that's currently there for Account of Foods and clean up this intersection, establish the sidewalks and green scape here. This would be a great location for some sort of monumentation, either for the police department or as kind of an entry point into the, into this area. So we would, I would imagine that this area is going to get filled in. It's the most spot on the site right now, and that this would be an opportunity for some landscaping and some monumentation.
The last question, just wanted to check, and you know, with, you know, our engineering department talks about accesses onto different roadways, and are they okay with that entrance, you know, to the secure parking lot, adding that as a third entrance to that area? Just thought I'd ask. And would there be some, like, if officers are leaving in a hurry, is there some kind of a warning system for traffic on the road that somebody might be coming out?
I always touch on the things that we're still working on. So yes, we are still chatting with individuals about that. We did bring this up at our last, at our planning meeting. We have combined this into a singular entry point versus multiple entry points. In our conversation with the police department and the chief, having this entryway be more of a mid-block access point, and having the building set back a little bit further gives us really good sightlines to the north and south on Adams. You are correct. You are correct. We do need to get permission for this access point and that is on our agenda to do in December and January. Just to firm that up.
Okay. Thank you very much. It looks great though and exciting project. So thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Yeah, John, I do like the DMV being there. So they have some security, you know, for the police to be close by. So I know in this times that people are getting a little little rambunctious when they go to get their tabs and they can't get them right away. So it's nice to have the security right there for them.
Yeah, and I know, I probably should have pointed it out. We are, from our original conversations and recent conversations, we are suggesting that perhaps we'll walk up into the Michael King's location as well, especially as it's along this retail front.
Kind of with that, you know, would, is there an access, you know, just looking at the drawing, there isn't a doorway, say, into the patrol area to that front lobby and the DMV in case the need is there, you know, should there be that?
That's a very good question, council member. We'll chat with the chief about that. It could easily be added off the briefing room. It's just not a conversation that we've had yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for John?
I had one. In the investigation area and the admin, it's, there's two blocks called COLAB. I was just curious what those were.
Those are collaboration areas. So open meeting spaces are always a benefit for teaming between departments. And so the synergies between administration, investigations and investigations of patrol, we wanted to have an open area where they could meet outside of their offices, you know, in a non, because if the case management room is being used, these collaboration areas are great opportunities to meet as a team without being in an enclosed space.
Great, thanks.
Mayor, there may be somebody who wants to ask a question. I don't know if you're, if you're up to taking questions or comments at this time?
If there's a quick one, we can add one, one here. Go ahead.
Sandy, I saw that you were looking to get in.
Yes, thank you so much. This is just really fun to watch you guys all at work here from my kitchen. This has been very interesting information about what you have planned. I'm just wondering, I was glad to hear that you are thinking of, or I don't know if it's a definite plan to include the DMV within the, the police facility. I think that's a very good idea. It, it kind of extends the, the services that are more citizen oriented rather than just being the delivery of, of police services. And I like that idea. To kind of take that idea a little bit further, have you considered trying to provide maybe a an onsite social service intake area? Right now, people have to drive over to Glencoe in order to register for social services and sometimes transportation is a problem. And that might be a very good expansion of this whole complex that you're developing here. The other thing is that many times, some of the calls that you are getting involved with, the people are really direly in need of mental health services. And so I'm wondering what your plan is to try to make that aspect a little more accountable or a little more, I don't want to say accountable, a little more available to people a little bit more easily. Transportation is always a problem for, for some of the people that don't have vehicles or, you know, have other transportation issues. And I'm just wondering if you have thought about addressing that kind of a concern for people within your, your safety complex here? I think those are my two main things. There are other services that could be included. I know I have visited with some service providers and they're the ones who really know the extra services that our people need. And I'm just wondering if you have talked with any of them about what kinds of things people need help with that are safety oriented?
All right, Andy, thanks for your comments. We'll take those under consideration. Is there anything else for John from the council? If not, thank you, John, for coming and giving your report.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate it.
All right, moving on, we have a public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed adoption of the modifications to the development program for development district number four and the proposed modifications of tax increment financing district four dash sixteen. We have resolutions underneath there. Resolution number one five two four one, resolution adopting the modification to development program for the development district number four and modifying the tax increment financing district number four dash sixteen therein and adopting the modification, modified tax increment finance in plan therefore. And resolution number one five two four two, resolution authorizing inter fund loan for the advance of certain costs in connection with tax increment financing district number four dash sixteen.
I believe Miles is present and he'll.
Yes, I am. Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Matt, I don't know if I need your permission to share a screen?
Yes, you will. So we'll get you set up for that. So you're good to go.
All right, let's see if this will work. Okay, everybody can see that?
Yep.
Okay, be, actually, this is just going to be really, really brief. What we're looking for tonight is just permission. We're just going to be changing the boundaries of an existing TIF district. If I can get this thing to work here. There we go. As you recall here, a few years back, we established TIF district four dash sixteen where the old medical clinic used to stand on Franklin Street by the Crow River. And back at that time, we purchased that parcel and then removed that building. And the idea was really just to set it up for future redevelopment. So now we have an opportunity to buy an adjoining property in this red square. 135 Franklin Street is what used to be a group home. It's kind of referred to as the Franklin House. And so that has come available and the EDA is thinking of purchasing that. And what we would do then is we would just expand the boundaries of the existing TIF district four dash sixteen so that it encompasses this additional property. And that'll, really, it just sets us up so that as this develops down the road, the EDA will be able to get itself reimbursed for the cost to purchase this property and clear off that lot. So I think really that's pretty much about it. I mean, the, the first resolution that the mayor talked about, it's really just adopting this change to the, to the plan and the boundaries. And then the second resolution, basically the way that we're going to finance this is we're just going to borrow money from the downtown loan fund to finance the acquisition and cleanup of this lot. And then we'll repay it in the future out of tax increment once we get this redeveloped. And just so that the council knows, you know, we're talking with a developer about a townhome development on this site. So I think that's really it. I'll be happy to answer any, any questions that the council might have.
Miles, this is Steve. I just noticed when I was looking over the stuff that on appendix A, it had an address, but it was city hall's address right at the top. Wasn't sure if, since these districts go back to when that was actually a project, didn't know if that was right or it should have been the medical center site. So.
Yeah, that one I.
Miles, if you can unshare your screen, I will, I'll bring that up. So.
Let me, let me figure out how to do that. Let's see here once. There we go. Okay.
I'll share my screen so you can have an idea of what, what Steve's talking about. I mean, time I need to be presented. You can see here, Miles, it talks about the owner being Applegate Properties, but that's got the city hall address.
Oh, okay.
And I think.
Oh, okay. I see the, yeah, I think, I think, yeah, Applegate, yeah, I'll get that fixed. Yeah, I'll just make sure. I think when Ellers and Associates updated the TIF plan, they started with the existing TIF plan because Applegate Properties, that actually refers to the old medical clinic that used to stand there years ago. So I'll get this page, I'll get it fixed.
And actually, appendix A, I didn't notice that one too, but appendix A right at the very top of the paragraph, it talks about the project description and has the middle, or the Hassan Street. If you scroll down, Matt.
Appendix.
A, so the other way? Or scroll up, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I thought we had this updated, but I will.
Okay.
I'll have to, it's on Ellers. It's those guys because they're supposed to be up. They, they cheated, right? They just took the old one and they updated it and put a map in it, but they didn't obviously go through it. So I will, I'll bring this to their attention.
And since they're not.
For us. And I should be proofreading it too. So I'll take my share of the lumps.
I almost thought I was talking to my kids. It's somebody else's fault. All righty, any other questions for Miles? Otherwise, we can open it up for public comment.
Anybody would like to address the council on the proposed TIF district? Mayor, there's nobody in attendance on speaks to council. I'm sorry, there is somebody. Please, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carol Johnson and my address is 550 Lakewood Drive Southwest. I just have a question for you. As far as, like, it sounds like you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul, taking money from one fund and putting it over to the other. But I just was wondering, you also said that you're already working with somebody for a townhome in that area? For, with a, with somebody that is a developer?
Right, yeah. We've had some conversations, yes.
Okay, so I mean, I was just wondering if there's any other conversations other than the townhome group that would be looking at that area?
Whoever has interest in it.
Well, this is the first, as, as the person here in our city, this is the first I've even heard of this coming about. So you're talking, putting this all together and then, then going forward with something. I'd be curious to find out how you're getting interest in it because, you know, the, the land property that is on the river right now, a lot of the land is, is parkland. And, and then what isn't on parkland is, it seems like, I think what our city needs is, and maybe you can take a look at it, is for somebody to take property that is going up to the river. And if you want to look at making your city more thriving, may, if you want to do a restaurant or something like that, do it where you can overlook the river and, and grow on that. Because all the properties, like for instance, the bowling alley, the, the other things that are up there by the bridge, um, everything backs up to the river. It doesn't overlook the river. Why not use that river as something that, look, I mean, I live on the river down on Lakewood, but yes, it's like a swamp in front of my house because it's only two feet deep. But the beauty of the river is looking at the river. And that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do want to just share a little item. I, I appreciate Carol's comments. You know, we had, the Economic Development Authority, we had put together a request for proposal where we invited interested parties, developers, whoever, to submit a proposal for the development of this area. So that was done years ago and that was a public document. I mean, we had that on our website for a long, long time. And it was only recently now that we had a local developer express an interest in doing kind of a townhome thing. So I don't want people to have the impression that this is just coming out of nowhere. No, it was a very public process and we had that information out there for people to look at for a long time, actually.
As far as the project itself, Miles, you know, there's, there hasn't been anything actually drawn up yet or presented to the council, right?
Or that. No, not, I mean, the EDA has looked at some things, but we haven't brought anything to the council, no. And ultimately, the council will have to review and approve any proposal that comes forward.
And then just to back up even to the downtown plan, 2013, you know, this parcel as well as the medical center parcel were identified as pieces of property for future redevelopment, correct? And there might be an excuse, commercial or whatever, that wasn't necessarily identified, but redevelopment, definitely.
Right, right. And I do want to make note that, you know, the old medical clinic, I mean, that was, that was blight. And the house that we're proposing to purchase, that is classified as blight. I mean, it's 120 years old. So really, I mean, we're just, when you think about redeveloping a downtown area, kind of step one is just get rid of the blight. And so that's, that's what we're doing and just setting the stage for future redevelopment, whatever that may ultimately be.
Mayor and council, just to try to rein things in a little bit, the public hearing is in regards to establishing a TIF district or not. It has nothing to do with the development of that lot. So.
Thank you, Matt. Can we have a motion to, oh, maybe we should close the public hearing first, Matt?
Anybody else who would like to address the council regarding establishment of a TIF district on this lot?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to close the public hearing. Roll call. Mary?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Can we have a motion to approve both resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve both resolutions. Roll call. Mary?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
Can I ask Miles a question, Gary, while he's here?
Go ahead, Steve.
Since you're here, Miles, just.
Since you're here, Miles, just an update on the Right Way project?
Um, yeah, the, um, you know, it's a forty thousand square foot building and, um, from what I understand, uh, Right Way Conveyors is going to be moving into that here over the next few weeks. They want to be in that production area by the end of this calendar year. And, um, I've, I've been, I haven't witnessed it myself, but I've been told that where Right Way Conveyors is now, which is out in the township, uh, kind of over by Winstead, that there's a, there's a parking lot full of semi-trailer trucks lined up to pack these guys up and bring them to their new building. So exciting times.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much.
As long as Miles is still here, do you, anybody else have anything for Miles? Alrighty, moving on, uh, update on the city's CARES Act funds.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we do have Finance Director Andy Reid here to present, uh, an update on the city's CARES Act funds.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yeah, as you recall, we received a little over one million seventy-four thousand dollars in CARES Act monies back in July. We had a rather short window to spend that money, had to be spent or committed by November fifteenth. Um, so the good news is, we did spend all our money. Uh, we, we were able to, uh, finish our final report to the state, November twenty-fourth, indicating that we spent all our monies and we did not have to transfer any excess or unspent, uh, funds to the county. Just to give you a quick update, you did have a schedule in the packet showing how we did spend our money. The biggest expenditure was with our Small Business Assistance Program. Where council had committed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to give aid and, uh, to small businesses within the, the city limits of Hutchinson. We weren't able to spend the whole seven hundred and fifty thousand on that program, unfortunately, but we did spend just under seven hundred thousand, um, to give funds to sixty-seven businesses, averaging just over ten thousand dollars per business. So still did a lot of good getting money out into our community. Uh, that, the funds that we did not spend up to that seven hundred and fifty thousand, we were able to, uh, essentially use that for public safety wages and benefits for the, for the police department. Our other big expenditures were for our personnel when they had to stay home, either during the, the state's stay-at-home order or as employees either contracted COVID or had to stay home because of, uh, quarantining for, for some reason. That leave that we paid for those employees to stay home, that could also be paid out of these CARES Act monies. So that was just under a hundred and thirty thousand that was paid, uh, to employees. Then we had, uh, technology upgrades for our laptops, go-to meetings, uh, virtual meeting rooms. That was about forty-four thousand six hundred, uh, some payroll for, uh, as I had mentioned earlier, that payroll for public health safety employees, that came in just under fifty-six thousand. Uh, personal protective equipment, little over thirty-four thousand, that's your face masks, cleaner, sanitizer, gloves. Uh, installing Plexiglas at a lot of our service counters. Um, then our public health expenditures, little over thirty-six thousand. That, that includes, uh, upgrades to service counters, disinfecting facilities. And then lastly, another big item that we were able to spend our money on was some upgrades to our HVAC systems in various city facilities. This ionization, uh, process that we installed is, it's going to provide safer and cleaner air for, not only for our employees, but also for, uh, the public as they come into our facilities. So that was just a little over, little under seventy-five thousand. So in total, we did spend the million seventy-four thousand over the course of just under four months. So yep, as I had mentioned, the good news, we did spend it and didn't lose any of those funds. So with that said, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Andy. Um, just on the money that was left over from the seven fifty, when we talked about it at a council meeting, you know, we talked about the idea of possibly redirecting that extra money back to some of the businesses that didn't get full funding per their request. And just thought, you know, in case somebody is watching that, you know, was in that situation, you know, how the thinking went to utilize it for the PD, which I know originally it's, it was really set up to help the cities first, you know, with some of their costs. So I think, uh, that was appropriate, but just wanted to double check, you know, what the thinking was again, in case somebody was wondering.
Yeah, I, I can certainly turn it over to Miles here if he's online, but the, we gave Miles up to, I think even into the first week of November to try to reach out to additional businesses. He was really pounding the pavement, trying to get rid of the money. So there was a very short window, once he said he was done, to be able to make a decision how we were going to utilize it.
Yeah, this was.
Miles, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this was more than, instead of, you know, trying to find new businesses, maybe there were businesses that got partial funding based on the formula, but didn't get everything that they had requested, so, um, I know that would.
Yep, and I can, I can comment on a little bit about that, Steve. When, at the very beginning of the program, when we were shaping it up, what we wanted to do is make it as objective as possible. And so the actual, when it came down to the awards, we s- we set it up so that the award amounts were just determined by points. And so that was the size of the business in terms of employees and their sales. And then the other metric that we used was what percentage of their profits were lost due to the pandemic. So we compared twenty nineteen numbers to twenty twenty numbers. So the actual awards, they were, they were just determined by points. So there was no subjectivity, nobody made a decision about anything. We just, we just put the data in the spreadsheet, it kicked out a number, and then that's kind of what we came up with. So to, I mean, the only way that we, I suppose we could have gone back and we could have count, we could have went back, I suppose, and just took that last, uh, fifty thousand or so and then just do a pro rata increase for everybody. But that would really be getting into the nitty gritty. And truth be told, actually, I think most of the businesses, well, I shouldn't say that. I mean, there were a number of businesses that didn't request that much, just simply because they didn't have enough qualified expenditures. You know, it was only certain things that the money would go for. And, you know, for a number of these businesses, I mean, you know, we had some on the low end, it was like thirty-five hundred dollars or something. And then on other ones, it would go all the way up to fifteen thousand, but none of the point, none of the point awards went that high. I think our top award was, I'm going to say thirteen-five, is what it worked out to be. So, um, I totally get what you're saying. I, I think, yeah, we just, we just did it on a point system. So it really didn't lend itself to, to saying, okay, we'll give you an extra spiff.
Okay, like I said, I just wanted, since it was asked and somebody might have been wondering too, so.
Yeah, and I think it's a fair question and kind of going back to what Andy said. I mean, at the end, we were really just, uh, working overtime to try and get people to apply. It sounds crazy, but I mean, it was just hard to get people to apply. And, um, um, part of it was, is that there was other programs out there. There was a SWIFT, a program that was run through Southwest Initiative Foundation. There was a couple of state programs. And then there was a rule that came down to our level that said, you know, you can't double dip. And so then the constraint became what did businesses have that were actual qualified expenditures? And that kind of capped them in some respects.
Well, I, I would just want to thank the EDA for, and your work, you know, for coming up with this. Because I, I know in the beginning, they were kind of wondering how many businesses you'd be able to help. And, uh, to actually help sixty-some local businesses was really great. So, thanks.
Yeah, we're really thankful for the city council to make the funds available. And I mean, we did, we did help a number of the businesses up and down Main Street and in the downtown, which I know was a, a real area that we wanted to prioritize. And then we did, uh, provide assistance to, gosh, I'm going to say six, seven, eight nonprofits too, that would have been in a very bad place if it had not been for that assistance. So I think the program worked very well.
Great. Anything else for Miles or Andy? Alrighty, uh, moving on, uh, review of the truth and taxation hearing.
Mayor and Council, I'll take this. Um, generally, what we like to try to do is the council meeting after our truth and taxation hearing is to, I'm at least have the council kind of go back and, uh, pull forth any thoughts from that hearing. Said I think we only had three people that participated in the, in the public hearing portion of it. Um, and so I've just got to guess a brief, uh, rundown of, uh, the proposed budget and tax levies. And then I'll turn it over to you guys for any additional questions or comments as we look to bring the, the final, um, levy and budget to the city council at your, at your, uh, next meeting here. Um, so first off, this is just a, a quick review of where we had our approved levies at in September, um, after preliminary budget was, um, preliminary tax levy was approved by the city council. Um, at that point, we were looking at a, a total tax levy increase of three point nine percent. Um, obviously, we always like to highlight the EDA, EDA and HRA, because you guys do have the final say um, in the, in the levies that get proposed by, by those borrowers. And so from September to what will be considered, at least at this point, um, we're looking at a proposed tax levy increase now at about two point one percent. Um, so we, we eliminated roughly, I think it was about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in, in property taxes from the, the proposed budget. Um, that's, and, and that will be in front of you for, for consideration. Um, here's just kind of an impact on what that means for, um, your median home value, um, based off of the proposed two point one percent tax increase. From that tax increase, we're actually seeing a decrease in our, our tax rate. Um, so, and that's just to highlight that most likely, most property owners are, um, impacted by increase in property values and not necessarily, um, the tax levy increase. And there's, we touched on the various different, um, avenues that you can be impacted, uh, um, by that. But roughly, um, if you've seen, uh, if your home experienced about an eighty-five hundred dollar increase in value, you're expecting about a twenty dollar municipal, um, tax increase for, um, twenty twenty-one. One of the things I did, one of the things I did not show that night, um, was our cost of government comparison to some of the other regional centers that, um, that we take a, a look at. And then also just to highlight, you know, in some areas, um, municipal governments maybe don't provide the enterprise funds that, that we do. Um, but you can see, we're kind of in the middle of a pack, um, when it comes to some of the other areas that we compare ourselves to. With this, we look at Alexander, Brander, Fergus Falls, Marshall and, and New Ulm. Just a brief rundown of our proposed revenue for twenty twenty-one. We're looking at a, a one point seven percent increase in our revenues. And that first line is, is that property tax increase. For the most part, we're seeing either flat or even a slight reduction in proposed revenues for, um, twenty twenty-one. As you recall, we talked about the budget for next year is really looking at, um, kind of returning to normal as is. Um, I guess, uh, pre-pandemic, um, and so those are the numbers that are reflected within that. And this is just a breakdown of, of where our revenues come for next year. Roughly forty percent of our general fund, this comes from property taxes. The transfer ends, that's the money we receive from Creekside, Licker Hutch, um, Hutch Utilities, water, wastewater. Intergovernmental revenue, that's your local government aid. Obviously, you got your license and permits, uh, charges for service fill out the remaining amount of our, our general fund revenues. Um, for expenditures next year, the one point seven percent increase in revenue matches the one point seven percent increase in expenses. As we noted, sixty-eight percent of our costs, um, are to cover wage and benefits. We see a, a slight increase of one percent, um, for next year. And then for the most part, everything else remains relatively flat from, uh, a cost with a, a slight increase in the remainder of our budget expenses. And this is just kind of a breakdown of where those funds go within our general fund. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, there's not a significant change in where we're allocating our, our expenses at. Um, I did want to just kind of give you a quick update on our projected, uh, debt levy for, um, the, the graph that we showed the other day didn't necessarily go out all the way. And so it was a, I think it showed that our, it looked like our, our proposed tax levy was going to continue to increase. Um, the one thing I do want to highlight is that you're going to notice that gap in between the red line and those bars. And that's really going to be a conversation for the council to have as we enter the next year, when we start talking about discussions on the police station and other financing. What that, what that, uh, gap shows is really the low interest rates. And so we, we really wanted to kind of highlight to the council what the low interest rates are doing, um, for our debt levy. It gives us, I guess, the opportunity to lower our debt levy or to potentially increase, um, some of our project costs and/or, um, find other ways to, to use that financing. And so that's something we'll have to discuss as we enter, uh, mainly discussions on financing the, the police station here in the next couple, uh, of months. And just, uh, once again, just a brief summary, um, we're looking at one point seven percent revenue increases matched by one point seven percent expense increases. Looking at a, um, a city tax increase of two point one percent for next year, with an overall total tax impact, uh, about two point three percent when you factor in, um, the EDA and the, the HRA tax levies into that. But I think it's important to highlight the city's portion is two point one percent, because I know sometimes that gets confusing for, for individuals. Obviously, it doesn't take into county, school districts, county, um, other portions of, uh, property tax. So, um, the next couple of steps, uh, it's our, your plan to approve the budgets and the tax levies at your December twenty-second, city council meeting, and we'll have to certify all of our levies to the county and the state by the, the end of December. And so that was just obviously a brief rundown of the truth and taxation hearing. And then kind of wanted to hand it over to the council for any additional comments or feedbacks, um, as you maybe had a little bit of time to reflect on the truth and taxation hearing that we had last week.
Well, I'm glad, you know, that, I appreciate that you showed the, um, debt levy. Um, you know, I had asked some questions about that at the hearing. I thought back to like last year and I think even the year before, knowing that there was going to be some projected increases that, you know, maybe we should start raising that sooner, you know, like last year even. Um, but the comment then was, well, we shouldn't really levy any more than, you know, we will be using. So right now, there is the gap, but you know, there, it sounds like you'll have that discussion and, um, try to understand.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, Andy or I thought that we continued to see the low interest rates that we have. You know, we started to see that uptick and then it dropped way back down again. And so that's, you know, I think we were trying to factor in quote-unquote, "normal" interest rates. And obviously, that's not, that's not happening right now, so.
Sure, but that's why you have a plan and you update it occasionally, so that's good. The last thing I wanted to touch on again was the idea of setting some money aside for, uh, fleet and especially even the large fleet. Just seems, you know, that here we have an opportunity that we could add a little bit to the levy as a start of, of fun to do that without it being too great. Looking at the total levy, it seems like if we added eighteen thousand three hundred, it's basically, it would get us to that two point five percent level. So again, still not anything crazy. Um, by itself, that's not a lot, but then going forward, if the council would add ten thousand dollars each year on top of that. So if it was eighteen thousand for twenty twenty-one, then, um, in twenty twenty-two, it could be twenty-eight thousand and thirty-eight thousand, forty-eight thousand. Over five years, you, we would accumulate a hundred and ninety thousand. Over five years, you, we would accumulate $190,000 that could be utilized for some of the large fleet purchases. Maybe at that point it levels off, you know, so there's not an additional levy increase. But at least it's a way to start setting some money aside, you know, for those larger purchases that we don't have right now, other than using some debt. So, you know, Matt, any thoughts on that?
I mean, you know, Andy and I have shared from time to time over the years that, you know, that's the one area within our general fund that we know it needs to be addressed. And I think we shared at the, at the public hearing, and we feel like we've done a pretty good job of being able to address the small fleet. But the large fleet is really where we're going to have to be creative, if you want to say, over the years to come. And so, you know, I guess the general response is going to be, if you're going to give more money to the general fund, yes, that's, that's where we're going to set it, set aside for is to help with those, to help try to address that large fleet that we know that's somewhere down the road is going to have to be addressed either through borrowing or some other sort, you know. Historically, the city has paid for cash for your fire trucks, your payloaders, your, you know, your pieces of equipment that run 300, 400, 500,000 or more. And, and with the way we're currently funding it, we're, we're continuing to plan to pay for cash and we're short. So if you're going to increase the levy, that's where we would put that to. Like I said, there's other, you know, we borrowed money last time to narrow that gap, but there's still a pretty big gap. And so those are, I guess, the long ramble answer of mine is to say, if you give us more money, we're going to direct it towards fleet funding.
So again, it was just a thought, it seemed like there was room to do that this year and then subsequent years, raising that incrementally starts to add up. And it wouldn't really impact the levy in a major way, 10, an additional $10,000 each year. So just wanted to propose that and see what the council thought.
Is there any thoughts on that from the rest of the council?
I mean, I'd be okay with it if Matt and Andy are comfortable with it, you know, I mean, not to punt, but I mean, what, what do you guys think is the best plan? We have to come up with some way to, you know, fund the large fleet. So I don't know, I mean, do you guys have a better idea for it or what, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm going to be honest, it's tough to, you know, in, I'll punt it myself a little bit and Andy can jump in if he wants. I think the tough thing is figuring out exactly where everything is going to fall when it comes to financing the police station. You know, we have a pretty good idea of how that's going to be funded. We know there's going to probably be something of a gap. And so it's, it's tough to say either which way. You're, oh, and you're going to be looking at long-term adding to the debt, you know, if we don't start putting money towards it. I, I don't think, I think that, you know, the, the analysis that Andy and I have done, the shifting of money, the, the pushing back of, of when we replace our heavy equipment does a little bit, but there's still a pretty large gap. I think we're looking at 300,000 and Andy, you can correct me if that number is wrong. You know, we're in that, just for the council's knowledge to, to show the work that we're doing. I think when I started here, that number is about 700,000. And so we've been able to cut that down to about 300, 350. I just don't know if there's, if there's any more that we can do outside of raising the levy and/or borrowing to meet some of those large capital needs in the future. Andy, anything else to add?
Well, I think this can tie into a fund balance discussion next year as well. We still haven't really talked about how we should revise our fund balance. Right now, we essentially say our fund balance needs to be for at least 40% of our next year's expenditures. We're at 56%. What do we do with that extra 16? We've talked about levy stabilization. We can use excess fund balance for that. We, we can also set fund balance aside for public emergencies or disasters. But can we also carve some fund balance every year? If we have a surplus, can we carve some over to equipment? Those are all things we can talk about. I'm not saying this is the ideal use of fund balance for heavy equipment, but it's an option if we don't want to go the debt route. And also, as Steve has suggested, setting aside cash each year, that's, that's also a good way to build fund balance.
Yeah, I guess I just thought, again, this isn't an encompassing avenue. It still might have to use fund balance or some debt. But as Matt noted, you know, there's probably going to be some things to figure out with the police, police station as well as maybe there's a desire to have more project funding as well. So this way would just be a way to take out, free up some of that gap, you know, for some of those uses while still trying to address the large fleet funding gap itself.
You know, I'll just note this, obviously, this is for discussion tonight. What I can do, and I think we did this a couple of years ago when we had a similar discussion on something else, is I can provide, Andy and I can provide two options when it comes to the, the tax levy on, uh, next week. And we can maybe even throw some information together on, on some of the, the fleet funding too, just so everybody has a, a better picture of kind of where we're at with that.
That sounds good.
That would be really good if you guys could do that. Any other discussion?
I had a question for Andy.
Go ahead, Steve.
Not on this necessarily, but just where we are in this year's budget. What, what are you projecting?
Well, it, it's kind of tough. We just finished putting together November financials this week. I haven't had a chance to look at them. I think there's a few more entries Justin needs to post. And then once November's done, I can take a better look and see where we might finish. I'm still fairly confident we're going to end with a surplus. I just can't tell you how much. The CARES Act money has certainly helped, especially using that extra 50,000 from the small business to help pay for some police wages, that's going to help. This mild December weather with no snow removal, that helps. Low utilities, that helps. So I'm, I'm confident we're going to have a surplus. I just don't want to say a number. And also looking at our investments in another very low interest year, we're going to have a gain on our investments, which is really a distortion of our fund balance because we hold all our investments to maturity, so we never really see that gain. So it's, it's really paper revenue. And we saw that last year as well, at the end of the year, we posted a fairly significant revenue gain, which distorts our fund balance to a certain degree, but will have the same impact as well here at the end of 2020. So that's, as far as a limb, out on a limb, I'll go for a surplus. But I can certainly, as I analyze November data a little more, I can, I'm, I'm, I'm going to put together a better forecast, see where we're at, and I can bring that back to you guys later.
That's why Andy's our finance director, so.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then, we have non-finished business under new business issuing taxi service license to Erickson Acres Carriage Company LLC.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is, I guess, a unique request that we have into, to you for your consideration. But Erickson Acres Carriage is looking to get a taxi license to do some horse, or strong carriage rides here within the community. They included the map within the council package. And it's mainly a route that starts over in, over by the campground, in the campground site, and kind of falls out over towards, it's a Masonic West River Park. So it's a fairly short, but it's, it's something that's new and unique in our town. But they meet all the requirements that, that's been put forth by, by the city for your consideration.
And make a motion to approve it?
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Roll call, Mary?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Letter of agreement for Art Space to conduct the next phase of analyst, on, analysis on the state theater.
Mayor and Council, obviously, we had a workshop this afternoon at four o'clock. You heard the, the presentation from Art Space on the first analysis that was done on the state theater. I think obviously based off of some of the questions that were raised tonight from members of the public, even yourself as the council, and I think that was even some of the feedback that was raised from some of the focus groups that Steve and I sat in on. You know, there was a desire to, to really dive deeper into future analysis to probably answer some of those questions and to probably narrow down the cost, the, the cost details, if you want to say, for this, you know, proposed future use of, of the state theater. And so we had asked Art Space to, to give us a proposal to kind of go into the second phase of that next analysis. And that's in, in front of you for, for consideration. Steve, I don't know anything I didn't touch on you wanted to, to add to that, so.
Just, first, you might just want to review for the public that might be watching, you know, what the workshop was about and that, what it was not about better yet.
No, I think that's fair. Um, yeah, obviously, I know there was a, an article written in the paper that said the council was, or, but the paper didn't necessarily, but I think a lot of the feedback that we had was that the city was considering purchasing the state theater, and that was not correct at all. Our four o'clock workshop took time to review a report that was put together by Art Space that really looked at the future use of the state theater. Let me evaluate the potential economic benefits of what that next phase was. And I would just like to highlight, the report noted that it could be a, a private investment. It could be a public investment, or it could be a combination of both a public and private investment into that facility. And so just so that's clear to the public, there was not a direction that it had to be a, a public investment into, into purchasing that, that theater. And so the council spent, I think it was 45 minutes, just kind of evaluating that report that was, was received, asking and answering some questions from, from Art Space. And so this is really kind of what's being put in front of the council for consideration is really kind of that next phase to do a deep, a deeper dive into some of those, those numbers.
So if I may, maybe, you know, I'd like to just take a step back and explain kind of how we got where we're at. 2013, you know, the EDA and the city partnered, you know, to update our downtown plan. And as part of that, a market study was done. And now that study identified, you know, that downtown as it is currently, is really, really caters more to local residents. And that, you know, there are people that come from outside the community. But the greatest opportunity for growth is to attract people from outside of the community. And specifically, it talks about the West Metro in Carver County. You know, Carver County is one of the largest or fastest growing counties in the state. So things that were identified was utilizing, you know, our parks and trails and the arts and our history as a way to create more of a destination, you know, and add to the other attributes and assets that we have. Going forward then, you know, in our strategic plan that was done in 2018, you know, we kind of built on that as far as wanting the city to be a destination for recreation, arts and leisure. So, you know, that kind of ties back to the downtown plan as well. So then about a year ago, I believe, Matt, you know, we were approached by the owners of the state theater saying that, you know, they, they have been trying to sell it for a number of years, but they were just wondering if the city might have interest in it, especially in light of the downtown plan, they're aware of that, and, you know, how that might fit into it. So, and that's what started this, some discussions and how do we look at this? And again, maybe it's not even the city purchasing it, but understanding what some of those options are, how it fits some of the needs that are out there, and what are the possibilities? And whether it's city-owned or whether it might be a public-private partnership, or maybe it's just a document that potential private party, you know, can utilize to come up with a plan and, you know, that, you know, they wind up purchasing it. So that's kind of the background. It's never been driven by the arts people per se. Again, there's always been discussions, you know, about, you know, what might be possibilities? And I think even people are aware that the Senex site was talked about, you know, as a possible site for a venue by some individuals or at least one person. But, so again, Art Space have a lot of experience developing projects. And so we reached out to them and that's where we're at now. So this would be just that follow-up, next phase to try to understand, you know, as Wendy and Matt talked about, dive a little deeper, meet with some of the stakeholders, meet with people that have more experience in some of these areas to see if the numbers are right and make some adjustments and kind of go from there. So, thanks.
So I had pretty mixed feelings about the report. You know, I thought there were some good things in it. You know, I think like their apartment income was probably pretty accurate, you know, and obviously that's not hard to multiply by how many apartments you have. After talking with some of my friends that own restaurants and have ran restaurants in Hutchinson, like I think their restaurant numbers are way off for as small of restaurants you could put in that space. And I also think that their music income is a little fluffy, you know, just, there's a lot of free music in Hutch. You know, like at the winery, at the brewery, and well, Zella's is gone, but they, they gave away a lot of music. And it didn't seem like there was a big swelling of demand for, you know, that type of draw around here. You know, so people would have to have a change in their mentality around here that they would be paying for music instead of just going for free, you know. But I think some of the acts that they're implying that we would get out here are playing for free at the winery every Sunday afternoon. And, you know, I've been out there a lot of Sunday afternoons and there aren't 80 people out there and that's for free, you know. And I realized St. Michael, maybe there is a theater that's doing it, but St. Michael's 15 minutes from Maple Grove. You know, I think like it'd be a more fair comparison to more of an outstate. You know, because I wouldn't even consider St. Michael outstate. There's not a lot of cornfields between Maple Grove and St. Michael anymore along the interstate there. You know, it's not rural, you know. Hutchinson's very rural and I don't, I haven't seen a lot of evidence that there's a big demand for a live music venue. You know, even like Riverside is a very well-run festival and they're not getting overrun with people. And it drives me nuts because I've gone to Riverside just about every year and they're drawing some great names and then people just don't go. You know, and some people go and it's fun, but, you know, it's not overwhelming, you know, the attendance. So that's always frustrating. And, you know, I've never ran a theater, but their concessions numbers seem really fluffy, you know, and like all the income in this whole report seem really fluffy for Hutchinson, in my opinion. So it'd be my suggestion that if, like, somebody wanted to do a fundraiser for it to do the next phase of this, that they can and the city can support it. But I don't know that we should put like city money towards it because I because I have no appetite for the city buying the State Theater. And I realize like the paper probably, they really jumped the gun and wrote an article that they maybe shouldn't have written until next week after this, after today, you know. But I don't see the council, at least for the next few years anyway, with our police station stuff, we're not going to have anywhere near the money it would take to buy the theater. And I don't, I don't want it to become another department of the city and get in that business, you know, but I think the city can support it through helping apply for grants or that kind of thing. But I just don't see the need to support it with dollars right now.
All right.
This is Dave, and I think I agree with Chad on just about every point from that perspective. I didn't see the numbers reflecting, and I know it wasn't an ROI-type report, but the thing of it is, is the fluffy part of a lot of the entities was fluffy. And bring them back to reality again would be, would be the thing to see. But I also believe that we have enough information of what was already stated that if there is a coalition of people that want to see this happen, I could take this forward and actually make it happen on their own without any further information coming from Art Space as far as that part was concerned. So I agree with you, Chad. I mean, basically, it's an entity of not only a possibility of maybe owning that or not owning it, and then the possibility of spending money for something I think has already been proven to be substantial in information. So I think we have enough smart people, and I don't mean smart as, you know, I'm not trying to be smart about it, but the thing of it is, I think we have enough people in Hutchinson that could take this and fly with it if they wanted to. So, you know, I don't see it as being a viable expenditure for us to carry it on.
Thanks, Dave. Let me say this, I am fond of the State Theater and the impact it has on our community. However, I do not believe this is something the city should pursue at this time. I think we have more fiscal issues to deal with in the next few months and years instead of this project, so that's my feeling on it.
Guess I would just say that first, you know, some of the comments, Chad, those concession numbers were actual numbers already. So there's not really any fluff in those. Obviously, there is questions about the restaurant and music, and that's why there's, part of this phase was to talk to some of the people that are in that business to understand some of that better. And then finally, it's, you know, again, this goes back to the downtown plan and the strategic plan, and, you know, we're talking about not purchasing it when we don't even know what that ultimate plan might look like, what partnerships there might be. You know, I kind of compare it to the Depot project. We spent about a half million dollars on that project, and we did it to revitalize and to help downtown and to have it be a place, you know, for a placemaking, you know, community asset, and it is. But, you know, so, and you can look at other projects as well. But right now, all we're looking for is the city to approve, you know, a little more in-depth analysis to see how this, you know, might work. And again, it might be a partnership, it might be just a whole private effort. But for us to put some money in to help downtown and downtown redevelopment, that is what we should be doing. And it's just looking towards the future and kind of think back to when in 2008, you know, we had the Great Recession was going, and we invested money to expand the industrial park. And that takes years, you know, to start seeing a return on, and other projects are the same way. So this is about downtown.
I think there's a lot of differences between the Depot project and this project. And you could make a pretty good argument that the Depot project went sideways pretty quick financially with all the dirt mitigation and that kind of stuff, you know. And like, did it turn out nice? It absolutely did, but I don't know that we, it kind of spiraled out of control, in my opinion. And I don't know if we would have done it if we would have known it upfront. You know, I mean, the pollution kind of spiraled that project out of control financially, in my opinion. But, you know, this, the Depot also doesn't have a potential to be an ongoing money pit either. You know, like if this thing gets, if this theater thing went through and it started going sideways, you know, you're going to have all this money invested, and then you're going to have an ongoing money pit, you know, that is potentially there. And I just don't, and this is a private business, you know, these people, I mean, Red and Linda, like, bless their heart, but they own a private building, private business, you know, and we're paying to do a business plan so they can sell their business or sell, you know, and we're not doing that for anybody else downtown or any other business. And, you know, there's, to call it historic, yeah, I mean, it's there, and it's an old building, but and it's, if it falls in on itself, it'd be a big hole downtown, but there's a lot of buildings downtown that that'd be true of. And I think if a developer wants to come and do this, this is going to be a couple-million-dollar gig. So if they want to do this, a $10,000 study isn't going to be nothing to them, you know. And if there is that much income potential as in this Art Space thing, like, there should be developers that are kicking tires on this thing pretty hard, but I just don't know that that income potential is as firm as what Art Space is suggesting. And I just think like if somebody, if some developer wants to do it, or if a group of volunteers want to raise 10 grand and do it, that's great. But to use another 10 grand of city money, it's just, I'm just not on board.
I felt that I felt what they presented to us was good, but we all had questions on some of the things that they talked about. We, the building itself, you know, they talked about the staging for theater versus music venue versus sound systems. All of that money wasn't, I don't think all of that was put into that yet. Some of that we didn't know, we don't know about. I mean, my heart's with the State Theater, I love the State Theater, but I don't think the way that our Main Street is now and what it might look like by the end of our year, next year, we don't know. I mean, we need to really think about the dollars that we're spending. We have a lot of businesses downtown that are struggling, and we don't know what's coming back up as a good business, Main Street, again. And it scares me. If we need to really be looking at all of our businesses, just not one entity. As much as I like the State Theater and I do support the arts, it's, I'm not comfortable getting that money out there right now either.
This, you know, and I'll just say this to, and that'll be it, but I can kind of see where it's going. But again, it's just $10,000 to do the next step of the plan. It's not necessarily for a private business. We don't know yet, you know, what that's going to be like.
How is it not, Steve? It's like Red and Linda are a private business, you know, like they're, they own the theater, and it's like, this isn't a public building. Like, it's, it'd be like us doing a study for Bill at the Gold Coin because his building's been sitting empty, and it's like, it's an old building, so why isn't the city helping Bill, you know? It's like, or the hotel, you know, we haven't given Jeff Hag 20 grand to do a business plan, you know, and he's had developers kicking on that building too, but we're not kicking money all over the place every building downtown, you know, because it'd be never-ending, you know, because when you buy a building like that, that's your responsibility as a building owner, you know. It's not the city shouldn't be kicking in just because your building is a little more special. You know, I mean, the theater is special, and the hotel is special. But, you know, just because they're bigger, you know, but we're not going to do this for every building downtown.
No, and this was just different because there could be the option for city ownership, just like the Paramount Theater in St. Cloud is city-owned, and the Hopkins Center for the Arts in Hopkins is city-owned and has a partnership with the school district. And those facilities, if you noticed on the sheet, were other conversations as part of this next phase to understand, you know, how that works and some of the mechanisms. So, so again, it's just trying to fine-tune some of this so that we could really make a good decision that instead of cutting it off now without fair analysis, you know, we can have some more discussion, get fine-tuned some of those numbers, and then make a decision down the road and maybe see where partnerships are. And we don't have any of that right now. All we have is a concept that was put together with some numbers. But as you said, to delve in a little bit deeper, and again, at this point, I hope that it wouldn't just not even, or just to close the door on city ownership when you kind of think of the value and what was talked about in the downtown plan and some of the other entities that kind of could fit with that as far as an arts district. You have Clay Coyote there now, you have the quilt shop. The Center for the Arts is looking at relocating adjacent to this. So pretty soon, you start having a lot of synergy that could start building on itself, and then in the end, be a destination for visitors and help strengthen downtown, which is what the downtown plan talks about.
All right, I'll have entertained either a motion to approve or deny.
I would make a motion to deny the agreement with Art Space.
I will second it. When the other discussion? Roll call, Mary?
To deny?
Yes.
I.
Dave?
Nate?
Chad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Moving on, governance, we have no reports or minutes from committees, boards, or commissions. Staff update, do we have Chief Jefferson there yet?
Yes, he is, he's here.
Does he have anything for us tonight?
No, he doesn't.
All righty, how about Kent?
Yep, Kent is here. Looks like he has a little bit for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Quickly, just want to recognize our Mindot District Eight folks and McCloud County Highway Department. There was a news release just a few days ago. There was a competitive grant process that's been administered over the last few months as far as freight transportation. And District Eight was able to capture three of the eight outstate awards. I believe it was eight, eight or nine. And they have, for three projects, two of them are in our region. It's for a roundabout. The first one's for a roundabout at US 212 and Morningside Road in Glencoe. So obviously, the four-way stop on the east side of Glencoe there. So that's a program for 2024. And then also in our area in 2025, a roundabout at US 212 and Highway 15 down by Rowan. So these are good, good projects for our region, both from a traffic flow and safety standpoint. So just want to thank the Mindot District staff and the, obviously, the county was involved in, on the Morningside side of things in Glencoe. That's it.
Hey, Kent? Kent is the one for Highway Seven at County Road One, south of Winstead? Is that a go, or, I mean?
Yes, I get the time, that's tied to a traffic safety study there the county and Mindot is currently administering, and I believe that's through HCP dollars, Highway Safety Improvement Program dollars. I want to say 22, Steve, if I remember correctly. Then there's some other ones on the board also down in the, or within the program down in the Glencoe area. County One and US 212, obviously, to the east of Glencoe. You know, County One goes, goes north from, well, that's the primary movement, going north. And that is a, an R-cut J-turn intersection, you know, probably familiar with those. I guess the big one in our area is on 212 in the Cologne area. And then likewise, I think that one's in '22, and then likewise in 2023 at Chandler and 212 in Glencoe. That's an R-cut, you know, the Dairy Queen Road, I guess people call it. So that's an R-cut intersection also. So, and those are both a result of the 212 study that was completed, you know, just a year or so ago. All right, thank you.
Thanks. All righty, Andy, are you still around? Do you have anything for us?
Andy's gone, so.
Okay.
Mark doesn't have anything either, surprisingly, so.
Mark don't have anything? What they got? Dave, what do you, you have anything for us?
Yeah, as most know, I sit on the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission that is in Wilmer. And we have a subcommittee called the RRL, it's RRTC. Now, that's a, I can remember that, but I can't remember the name of it. It's looking for a director, and I don't have that information as to who to get ahold of, but I know they're on the web. And Eric Day is the executive director of the MMDC. And so basically, I just encourage anybody that would have any knowledge of transportation and what it requires to do that, to apply, or at least look at it. They are looking for that assistance, so that's what I would have tonight. Maybe a little bit on the vague side, but MMDC is available on the web.
All right, thanks, Dave. Chad, do you have anything for us?
I did not.
Steve, do you have anything for us?
Just wanted to ask, you know, kind of on the history side, there was talk with the Depot project to add some signage or, you know, interpretive signage to talk about the railroad history in Hutchinson. Just because, you know, now a lot of people probably don't know what that was about, and that we had three trains coming into town. So I talked to Dolph and, you know, and even Terry Davis to see if he would be willing to help out. But the thought was to add some nice signage, possibly on the east, southeast end of the Depot, you know, facing the farmer's market, so it'd be visible. And maybe there's state grants, you know, through the Legacy Fund. The Historical Society has a grant program for projects less than $10,000, so we might be able to get some, some grant money to help with that. And Mary, if you chime in that it sounds like it would not infringe with Historic Hutchinson's efforts, and you'd be okay with that as well?
Absolutely, I've talked with the Historic Hutch Group, and we are, we are fine with that. You know, if there's grants out there, we're more than willing, you're more than willing to go after it.
Yeah, well, I just didn't want, if you were looking for, applying for grants too, to to, you know, get in the way of some of your projects. But anyway, just wanted to put that out there and if the council's okay, if that's something that gets worked on and then possibly comes back, you know, with a firm plan in the future.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, obviously if we've got something for a write-up, that would be great and then we can kind of evaluate from there what those costs are, which then would help us to at least look at pursuing something, so.
Okay, Steve, on that note, I I actually love interpretive signage and I used to drive my family nuts until my six-year-old also loves interpretive signage now. So we just drive Betsy nuts and maybe little Charlie will grow to enjoy interpretive signage and maybe not. But when we go to state parks and things of that nature, I stop and read every sign that we walk by and Ben loves it too now, so Betsy just kind of out of luck when we go places if she wants to go somewhere fast.
She must love when you go to museums and too.
Yeah, it's tough for her.
Jase, I'm glad to hear somebody else kind of stops and looks at everything. I I get the same thing, Chad. It drives Angie crazy, but I like looking at them too. All right, anything else, Steve?
Yeah, one other thing I just thought of, you know, made a note, but, you know, the comments or that Sandy Tracy brought up about the police facility. I know the, some of the social service things in particular, you know, there, several years ago, you know, there was talk with the county about having some annex capabilities in town and that didn't, there didn't seem to be an appetite for that from the county side of it, but I don't know if that is worth talking about anymore, so in this respect. So just wanted to offer that too, but maybe there is an opportunity.
And I was just going to say, Steve, you know, some of those things that Sandy mentioned, it's not services we currently provide at the city. And it's not been any conversations that we've had about providing. Obviously, the county provides those services. It doesn't mean that it's not something that we couldn't look at doing, but I guess up to this point, there's never been any discussion or drive from any of the councils for us to look at that. So I, I mean, I guess that's part of the reason none of that was included in in design is because it's simply not a service that we currently provide at the city. Now, it doesn't hurt for us to reach out to the county to see if they have any desire, like you said, some sort of a, an extension or or wing into Hutchinson. They do that with some of their other services. I mean, we can, glad they have that conversation, but I guess that's the the quick answer is that currently we're not providing those services at the city level.
Yeah, the thing that I thought of specifically and Mark's probably aware, there was talk of having, you know, like county court services maybe one day a week, you know, here where police officers and the public don't have to drive so far for that. But just outside of the police facility, if the DMV moves over there, there would be space filled or freed up in City Hall that potentially could be utilized, so.
Yeah, you know, I know there's been conversations. I don't think the court system at this point, based off of some of the construction, has any interest in putting something like that in Hutchinson, so.
Well, they didn't before either, so, anyway, that's all. Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, Steve, actually, I know I'm old, but I I remember the court being upstairs in the old, old City Hall, so they used to have court over here, right, Mary?
Mary's not as old as you are, Gary.
I I guess not. Mary, do you have anything for us?
I have two things tonight. I just wanted to let you all know that one of our former board members of the library and a great volunteer passed away last week and that was Abby Dahlquist. And she was a friend of the library, a wonderful woman who volunteered a lot of times. So I just wanted to let you know that. Also, I want to thank our city parks department and the guys who are out there working on all the lights and putting, lighting the trees and lighting up Hutchinson and the park looks beautiful. So, thank you.
Like the addition of Hope. That's a city project, Matt?
Well, Mary is not going to take, it was something that was spearheaded by Mary. That, yeah, the city staff put up, but it was, Mary was the driver of that. So I know we've had, and I told Mary this, we've had a ton of really positive comments about that being up and I've shared that with her, so.
Thanks, Mary. Matt, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing else that comes to mind at this point, so.
Maybe we could just move the county seat from Glencoe to Hutch and then the court would be here.
I hope, I'll have that conversations with the county and see if there's any desire in doing that, so.
Sure, run it by them.
Okay.
It's interesting, that's been tried before. You know, when I was down at the Historical Society going through information on Park Elementary and stuff like that, I came across a petition to do that. Apparently it didn't go anywhere though, so.
Surprisingly, Tom just said he's going to need an increase in his budget to to help us do that, so I don't know what that's referring to, so.
All righty, just, you know, we're, we have some great weather and, you know, just a reminder, when we do get snow or like the other morning when it was foggy out, it was, it was slippery out. So just, just a reminder that when the snow comes, everybody be careful driving. And with that, I think we should adjourn and go home and see our families.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to adjourn. Roll call, Mary. Steve.
Hi.
Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.